So we'll let our planning staff go ahead and get ready to go?
Yes, I think we're ready. And so Mayor and Council, our briefing today is a little out of order, but it's related to the North Lamar and South Congress Transit Center Station area vision plans. In 2022, Council directed staff to work in partnership with CAP Metro to develop station area vision plans for North Lamar and South Congress Transit Center stations. This work supports the Equitable Transit Oriented Development Policy Plan that was accepted by the City Council in the spring of 2023 and reflects more than two years of robust public engagement. The plan and several related actions are scheduled to be considered at public hearings on May 22 City Council Agenda, and our staff is excited to provide a briefing today and answer your questions. The Planning Department's project manager, Anna Vellal, will be providing this morning's briefing. Anna?
Thank you. Good morning, City Council. My name is Anna Villarreal, and I serve as Principal Planner in the Planning Department. I'm here to provide you with a briefing on two station area plans that are moving forward to our council adoption consideration on May 22. These plans are part of our larger equitable transit-oriented development planning work program. So what is equitable transit-oriented development called ETOD for short? The overarching goal of this effort is to build a city that allows community members to better access housing, jobs, services, and retail near transit while preventing displacement and prioritizing those historically left out of past planning efforts. Traditionally, TOD efforts have encouraged market-supported development along transit corridors. Equitable TOD goes beyond thinking about places to thinking about those people in those places and working to create new economic opportunities for residents of all income levels. Following voter approval of Project Connect in 2020, the city partnered with CAP Metro, Austin Transit Partnership, and community stakeholders to develop a framework for equitable transit-oriented development across the Project Connect system. City Council approved this framework called ETOD Policy Plan in the spring of 2023. The ETOD Policy Plan is intended to guide future development around the full Project Connect system. The plan includes goals, a station area typology, a policy toolkit, and also identifies priorities for more specific planning. As we were developing the ETOD Policy Plan, the city and CAP Metro also partnered to work on two pilot station area plans. One plan focuses on the North Lamar Transit Center located at US 183 in North Lamar. The other one focuses on South Congress Transit Center located at Ben White and South Congress. Both stations currently serve as major intermodal hubs, served by rapid bus, and presents an opportunity for positive future transformation. Station area planning is a community-driven approach to crafting a vision for the areas surrounding the transit station. These plans will guide future land use decision-making, but do not on their own change zoning. These plans were formally initiated by City Council at the end of 2022, and the city partnered with CAP Metro and their consultant team to engage the public in 2023 before draft plans were handed off to the city in 2024. We presented draft plans for public review in the fall of 2024 and are now bringing plans and related actions through the adoption process. On April 22, the Planning Commission voted to approve recommendations, which will move on to City Council for consideration on May 22. Over the last two and a half years, we have conducted multiple robust rounds of public engagement that included tabling events, workshops, open houses, surveys, and many briefings to gather feedback from residents near both transit centers. After these were postponed at the March 25 Planning Commission meeting, staff reached out to neighborhood organizations and participated in focused meetings on these proposals. A detailed summary of this engagement will be available for backup. The input received throughout the process shaved the draft North Lamar Transit Center and South Congress Transit Center station area vision plans, released for public review last October. The plans include an existing condition analysis, proposed character maps, recommendations, conceptual images, and an implementation plan. Both the North Lamar Transit Center Station Area Vision Plan and the South Congress Transit Center Station Area Vision Plan were developed through an iterative process that started with the rich knowledge of community members about these very distinct places. During the first round of engagement, the project team worked through a series of forums, focus groups, and surveys to identify existing strengths and weaknesses and opportunities for improvement. Based on these visioning exercises, the project team developed potential strategies that were reviewed by community members in round two before finalizing draft plans that reflected what was heard during the round two of the process. In the North Lamar Transit Center Station Area, community members were very interested in seeing safer conditions and connections between existing affordable housing communities and the transit center, and were interested in seeing new employment opportunities in the station areas. The plan includes connectivity and land use recommendations that would support both of these community goals. In the South Congress Transit Center Station Area, community members were very interested in incorporating additional opportunities for higher density, affordable housing at the transit center while connecting to the planned Bergstrom Spur Trail and also continuing to see small local businesses and maker spaces thrive. And the plan includes recommendations that would support also these community goals. In both areas, we heard and continue to hear concerns about possible residential displacement pressures. And the proposed future land use maps are careful to focus on the commercial and industrial areas immediately around the transit sites. We also worked with technical advisors from many of our sister departments throughout the process to ensure that the recommendations being proposed are all actionable and to minimize any unintended consequences. The North Lamar Transit Centers...
It should be done. I think I did it.
The North Lamar Transit Center Station Area Vision Plan is focused on the half a mile area around the North Lamar Transit Center located at the northeast corner of the intersection of US 183 and North Lamar. The Transit Center is a key bus transfer hub for the area. Challenges vary, but include car-dependent infrastructure, lack of pedestrian and bicycle mobility, older housing stock, and limited open space. The plan envisions the Transit Center to continue to support transit operations while adding amenities to improve the quality of life for the surrounding community, such as mixed-income housing development with storefront retail, local businesses, a public park, and a shaded transit plaza. Another key component of this plan is the future land use map. This parcel-level map illustrates the area where growth is encouraged and areas where our priority should be preservation as the community continues to evolve. The future land use map is not zoning, but will guide future city decisions about zoning. We have three broad character districts on the future land use map that include TOD mixed use in brown, which is the highest level of development activity, ideally with a mix of ground-floor commercial or other active uses with residential, commercial, and/or office uses on the upper floors. We also have the mixed-use industrial in purple, which will include low-impact industrial uses with added options for retail, office, and attached multifamily residential development. Lastly, we have neighborhood transition in orange, which will include a variety of medium-density residential uses or small-scale offices and commercial buildings. The purpose of the Neighborhood Transition District is to enable an area to blend more seamlessly between a primarily residential area and more active commercial and office use areas. The South Congress Transit Center Station Area Vision Plan is focused on the half a mile area around the South Congress Transit Center, which is situated off of South Congress and Radham Lane. This area faces challenges, including a car-dominated infrastructure, US 290 acting as a major infrastructure barrier, and rapid redevelopment increasing displacement pressures. The plan envisions the Transit Center to continue to support transit operations while adding amenities to improve the quality of life for the surrounding community, such as a future Bergstrom Spur Trail, mixed-income housing, active storefronts, small businesses and workforce training spaces, CAP Metro Amenities Center, and access to first and last mile micro-mobility connections. The future land use map proposes high-density TOD mixed uses along South Congress and Radham Lane. Current industrial areas are mostly designated as mixed-use industrial, and neighborhood transition properties are those closest to low-density residential. Because both station areas overlap with existing neighborhood plans, it is necessary to amend underlying neighborhood plan future land use maps in order to avoid any future conflicts. As companion items to the adoption of the station area plans, we are recommending nine related amendments to Neighborhood Plan Future Land Use Maps. We have mailed out required public notices to impacted properties and neighborhoods and also hosted virtual community meetings on those amendments on March 4 and 5. Included in your backup, you will find a document that includes the Planning Commission-recommended amendments and also the general recommendations that were provided to us on the Planning Commission meeting on March 22. We are now bringing forward a total of 12 related items for council consideration, including the North Lamar Transit Center and South Congress Transit Center station area vision plans, also nine Neighborhood Plan Amendments and one code amendment. The code amendment will establish the regulations and amendment process for the station area plans, should they get adopted. This code amendment will ensure that the process for amending this new type of plan is consistent with the current Neighborhood Plan Amendment process and that the public receives adequate public notice and can participate in a community meeting for future changes to the future land use map. The North Lamar and South Congress Transit Center station area vision plans will become part of the Imagine Austin Plan and will guide future regulations, investments, and programs in these areas. Once these plans are adopted, property owners will be able to request property-specific rezonings that are consistent with the new flums. In addition, CAP Metro will continue to work on design and redevelopment of their transit center sites with the conceptual design as the starting place. In the short term, city staff will also work to process an amendment to the ASMP to include the new connectivity recommendations, and we anticipate bringing back city-initiated rezonings once we are done creating new zoning tools, including Phase 2 of the ETOD overlay. Layered onto these changes will be additional programmatic investments and investments in subsidized affordable housing being coordinated by our partner departments. Additional information about the plans and planning process can be found on the City Speak Up website. The proposed items are the result of wide community engagement and collaboration across city departments and CAP Metro and represent a significant step towards creating more equitable, connected, and vibrant communities around the transit stations. We believe that these plans offer a clear path forward to help us realize the full potential of our transit investments and improve the quality of life for our community members. And we look forward to continue this conversation and your feedback as these plans move towards adoption. And that concludes our presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time. Or?
Members, questions on either the South Congress or North Lamar? Councilmember Siegel?
Thank you, Councilmember Vella, and thanks for this presentation. I have some questions mainly regarding the North Lamar Transit Center. And I first want to thank Councilmember Vella's team for leading on this. This is primarily impacting District 4. But you know, I have some questions because parts of District 7, on the Crestview side, we'd love to have good access to this growing center. And so if you could share a little bit more about the plans for connectivity, you know, there seem to be goals based on the working group amendments to improve connectivity. And in particular, I'm thinking about if someone's at the Crestview Rail Station, for example, and wants to get up to the Transit Center. How are we going to make sure that when people are going under 183, where there's not a lot of good pedestrian access, bike access? You know, what's Transportation and Public Works' plan to make that a better experience for different types of transit users?
Yeah, that is definitely something that we heard over and over throughout this process, and it is one of the main goals of this plan to ensure that transit riders and everyone that lives around the area are able to access both transit centers or both CAP Metro stations. We have included recommendations within the plan that talk about safety and connectivity. We have a connectivity map that addresses some of these issues in terms of the connection between the southern part of US 183 to the northern end where the North Lamar Transit Center is located. We are hopeful that the Powell Lane extension crosses 183 and connects to Anderson Lane in a safe way. So we have been coordinating with the Transportation and Public Works Department to make sure that that is something that is both in our plan and that it's also acknowledged in their future work.
Okay, great. Thank you. And is street lighting also part of what you're thinking about? You know, as someone who has like walked this route myself, it's could be a little sketchy at night, and I know residents have complained about street safety, both during the daytime and nighttime. So is that part of the plan, as far as you know?
We have included recommendations that call out for safety measures, specifically within the North Lamar Transit Center. CAP Metro will be negotiating different amenities within the Transit Center to make sure that it provides a safe place for all transit riders that are traveling to the site.
And do you know if that's part of the plan? Like if we're thinking about a pedestrian that's coming from the train station and walking up to the bus station, do you know if lighting is also a part of our plan there?
I believe that will be something that would stay within their property, the property that they own and operate. But I know that, you know, as part of some of the future zoning tools, we are thinking about different concessions that could be incorporated. So, you know, in exchange for density, there could be potentially some investments that could add safety to the streets. So that is potentially something that is in the works and to be able to negotiate some of those streets enhancements.
Okay, thank you. And that kind of gets to my last question, which is, you know, the, I guess, the responsibility or the division of responsibility between CAP Metro and the city, because this is obviously their site. I guess they're the lead developers, so to speak. And so, yeah, who does bear responsibility for access and mobility ultimately? Is that just an ongoing negotiation?
Within the CAP Metro site?
And well, also connectivity to the site.
Well, there's like a two-part implementation plan when it comes to this North Lamar Transit Center Station Area. We have the parcel that is owned and operated by CAP Metro, and they will be working with a consultant to make sure that, again, they provide amenities for the public that increase safety. When it comes to areas outside of the Transit Center, that will be a partnership between the city trying to put some of those improvements, but also property owners making sure that they follow some of the guidelines. The Planning Commission did recommend that we look at the urban guidelines to ensure that some of these, that the urban forum is something that is safe and comfortable for pedestrians. So it's something that we're looking at, but it would be property owners, the city, through different investments and programs. And when it comes to the CAP Metro side, it will be CAP Metro.
Okay, so as a council member, what's kind of the best way for me to, you know, impact this process to, you know, think about the pedestrian experience, the bicycle experience getting to the transit center?
I think we do have a lot of very good recommendations within the plan that talk about the improvements that are most needed. So I do think that we have compiled some of those concerns that the public has when traveling through the site. So I would definitely start with that list of recommended initiatives.
And that would be something that might be discussed at the Mobility Committee? Or when will this get hashed out, is what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Siegel. Any, Councilmember Dujan?
Thank you so much for this presentation. My questions are just really basic questions, I think, about some terms in the presentation I was not clear on. And to start with, I'm curious, this is related to one of the amendments. What is a auto-oriented use?
I think when Planning Commission recommended that we added that language, what they were thinking is auto repair shops, auto sales, they would like to see uses that are more supportive of transit. So while the plan does not control zoning and we cannot prohibit any uses, we did include language that is in response to Planning Commission's concern, saying that we do not reconsider rezoning to anything that's not transit-supporting.
So just to be clear, that's a limitation, the zoning for the kind of use cases you'd have that could be supporting automotive-related businesses?
Good morning. Stevie Greathouse, Division Manager, Planning Department. So the Planning Commission modification particularly related to auto-oriented uses specified the list of uses that is in the current ETOD overlay that is in the code that has a specific list of prohibited auto-oriented uses. And Planning Commission's recommendation was really, the plan itself is a land use guide. It's not a regulatory document in that sense. So staff's recommendation for how to address that use is to place a note on the future land use map indicating that prohibition of auto-oriented uses, including the list of uses that were prohibited by the ETOD overlay Phase 1, should be considered as folks rezone into different zoning under that future land use map. So that would be something that would be considered through the rezoning process, not something that this plan would be applying as a prohibition.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Next question, I'm just curious, any similar projects we can look at to understand kind of the mix of what the mixed-income housing is going to look like?
I think we have several examples when it comes to TOD sites, like the Plaza Saltillo. We included some renderings of what the site could look like, the CAP Metro site could look like when redeveloped. But CAP Metro will be conducting its own community engagement and design process based on these elements that the community has expressed they would want to see.
But in terms of the makeup between, I'm really focused on sort of the makeup between, say, market rate units that are maybe aligned to that particular neighborhood or geography or census tract or whatever you're basing off of versus, you know, subsidized units. Is there any comparable place I could look at? Would that be Plaza Saltillo or something like that?
Stevie Greathouse again. I think the intention is to do better than Plaza Saltillo. Plaza Saltillo has often been presented as a fantastic project, but something that we can do better in terms of the level of affordability on the site. So I think the goal is to do, to go above and beyond what's been provided at Plaza Saltillo for the CAP Metro site specifically. They have not gotten far enough into the market analysis and design to be able to commit to a specific number. Otherwise, we would have actually indicated a number in the plan was the goal. But we'll be sort of reporting, be able to report back on implementation when they get to the place where they can commit to that number.
Thank you. Any sense of the timeline on that?
They are in the process of kind of soliciting the consultant team to start providing them with guidance on how to do these deals. So it's still a ways off, I think, actually getting to a place where we've got a team onboard at CAP Metro that's helping them redesign the site. We've got, it's a ways out.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And the last question I've got is, I saw that there were a couple of places here on some of the amendments where staff did not support the Planning Commission recommendations, particularly when it came to neighborhood transitions. Can you expand on what that was about?
Sure. The Planning Commission included several recommendations where they thought that our proposed future land use map should have gone a little farther geographically. We developed a map that is very focused on kind of the existing grayfield development along the Transit Center, including existing commercial properties primarily. And Planning Commission and some stakeholders participating in the process really felt that we should be more ambitious and that we should expand kind of the boundaries out to the full half-mile or even slightly beyond it in some cases. And staff drew those boundaries fairly deliberately and don't recommend expansion as part of this process.
Okay, so it's not just about the renotice, it's about actually the geography of what's included in there?
Correct. It would, A, it would require a renotice. Certainly, if it's the will of the council, could direct that renotice and direct that process to happen, and we would make it happen. But from a staff perspective, based on the expertise that went into developing the plan, the focus was on the kind of grayfield development of larger sites that are likely to redevelop rather than trying to expand the boundaries of the future land use map far into an area that has fairly small, difficult-to-assemble lots.
Okay, thank you. And I think my last question was, we said that there was, let me go back to the map here. In the mixed-used areas around both of the stations, I think you said that the, that area was, there were concerns around residential displacement pressures, and this would be medium-density residential. Because my question is, are we talking about like five to 16 units? Or help me understand what mixed-residential means in this circumstance and how that transitions over into what presumably are single-family neighborhoods on the boundaries that I assume you just talked about, you constrain based on the Planning Commission recommendations?
Yeah, so there's, in terms of which zones are consistent with which future land use map designations, in the plans themselves, there is a table that lists specific zones that are consistent. And the transition zone includes a sort of load-higher-intensity multifamily zone, so all of the MF zones, which, it stops at MF4 and above.
Okay, thank you so much.
Councilmember Ellis?
Thank you. I have a question about affordability requirements. If I recall correctly, you were talking about how some of those had not been set yet. But would it indeed be required to be onsite? Or is there a conversation around fee and lieu? And I'm asking this because of the mention of the Saltillo project. And I know that that was built out before I took the dais, and so we ended up with a couple of moments where people came to City Council and said, we're actually not going to be able to build the affordable units onsite. Can we get the waiver from council to do fee and lieu? Can you talk through some of that process with me?
Yeah, so it's two fairly distinct things. One is the CAP Metro-owned site, where CAP Metro actually will have leverage in the ownership of their land to determine what happens on that site. And that was what I was speaking of when I said we don't know how many units, because that depends on the real estate deal that CAP Metro is going to be able to strike to make future use of that site and make it make sense financially. But the other piece is the regulatory piece and the private land property in the areas. So the recommendation would be that we would do a city-initiated rezoning to apply the ETOD Phase 2 overlay, if that ends up being created as a tool that makes sense. And that tool would have set specific requirements related to onsite affordability if folks opt into that bonus. That tool has not been created yet. This body will be helping us to create that tool and set what the requirements are. Phase 1 of the ETOD overlay along the Light Rail Line does have a requirement. It's set at sort of 60% median family income. The percentages vary depending on the building height, and the rental units are required to be onsite affordability with the ownership units being able to be paid fee and lieu as long as it's reinvested along the transit line. So that's how ETOD Phase 1 works. This body will really help us determine whether that's also going to be how ETOD Phase 2 density bonus works, and that would be the primary tool that would probably be used in these areas.
Okay, that's helpful context there. And then I had a question about walkable first or second floor. As we talk through some of these, I know there's a lot of interest in making sure that our transit lines in particular have that walkable first floor. But as our city continues to grow, I think there's a benefit to trying to also make the second floor somewhat walkable, like doctors' offices, gyms, things like that, where people know where to find them, but trying to create these cohesive, you know, land use maps that actually give people all of the things that they might need. Is that part of the conversation, or is that something that will happen later at an appropriate time?
It hasn't specifically been part of this conversation. I will say the conversation... I will say the conversation around use prohibition would definitely, if we had a use prohibition that applied to a lot, it potentially could prohibit some of the uses that would be of concern to not being pedestrian-oriented uses. The requirements related to the sort of retail frontage is a 75% frontage requirement for active uses. That is just a first-floor requirement and not a second-floor requirement. But if I'm hearing you correct, councilmember, what you're speaking to is really kind of the uses and people coming and going to get to the second floor, or the design? Like, I guess that's the...
I guess it's a bit of design, because obviously we can't sit here and say this has to be a doctor's office, for instance. But making sure, there's a lot of retail spaces, I think, all over town that are actually utilizing the first and second floors. So I think making those publicly accessible is helpful, especially where we get additional height in those buildings. When I see things that are on transit and they're 10 stories or higher, it seems like, you know, at that point, they're using steel infrastructure at the bottom of the building, and how do we kind of incentivize more walkability by leveraging that second floor as well?
Yeah. And I would say there's probably some opportunity within this plan to look at the recommendations and see if there is a recommendation to add to sort of continue to consider that. Since the plan is a vision plan and not regulatory, the place that that would actually be implemented would be through regulations that would come later in terms of probably how we define the ETOD overlay Phase 2. But that seems like a topic that could certainly be a suggested amendment to the plan document to make sure that we can continue to think about it.
Okay. I appreciate that, because I know some of this is, what authority do we have in our regulatory space versus what does the builder actually want to build and what is their vision for that plan? But I'm trying to look for any tools along the way to help us get to that maximum, that maximum walkability. And the more I research conversations around folks that daisy-chain their trips, you know, they're picking one kid up from school, another from daycare, trying to get a few grocery items on their way home. How do we really make all of those possible? Or at the very least, not hinder that folks have that need and want to make sure that our transit stations are conducive to that type of use? My last question will be about the Planning Commission recommendations. Are there more recommendations? It seems like there were probably about 10 that were presented to us. Is that the comprehensive list?
It is.
Wow. Okay. I'm out of questions then. That's surprising. And very helpful. It means there's good information being presented and that when it gets to Planning Commission, there's few adjustments and asks that can be added into that list. So I appreciate the information.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Harper-Madison.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. I had a lot of questions, and now I don't. So Councilmember Segal really addressed something that is, you know, near and dear, and I can say anecdotally, as recent as five years ago. I had a situation where my Uber driver had something dragging off of the back of his car, and I told him, so he pulled over to dislodge it. But we subsequently had an exchange that left me near the Transit Center. So I can say, as a North Lamar Transit Center user, I was emancipated at 15. I lived at that Transit Center. I mean, everywhere I had to go started at North Lamar Transit Center. Everything that's accessible from a, Councilmember Segal touched on the lighting, everything that's accessible from the projects on Lamar to the Lamar Transit Center, no lights, zero. Like, there's nothing that's user-friendly. But then if you look at it from the other angle, going northbound on 83 from the Lamar Transit Center, we have all those businesses. And it just occurred to me when Councilmember Segal was asking the question about lighting, and as opposed to having Cap Metro or the city or anybody else install, it occurred to me, are we working with those, when that Uber, I swear to God, I just cracked a joke. I said, I hope this ride is free when I help you dislodge. He left me there on the, the tire shop that he left me at, no lights. The Taco Cabana, no lights. The, no lights, no lights, no lights. And then everything under the bridge, from a homeless services perspective, huge encampment there from Lamar all the way to in, where the target is, in that sort of general, no lights at any of the businesses and under the bridge. Work with our and commercial partners and tech stock to, from a license, Councilmember Segal's point, it is not.
Yeah. And there should be, as Anna mentioned, there are recommendations in the plan that relate to sort of public safety enhancements of the area, including lighting. The lighting would definitely occur as part of transportation projects that occur. The Tech Dot facility, as you mentioned, is Tech, sorry.
I just, the point I was trying to make, I might have made that too broad when I articulated. The point I was trying to make was, would it benefit for us as council members to reach out to the businesses? Is it possible for us as municipality to offer some incentives for them to, just increasing the lighting at those independent individual businesses? It wouldn't have to be a phase-whatever thing, or, you know, we wouldn't have to add a step to what's already happening if we just worked in conjunction with the businesses that are already existing, to just put some lighting up. And that was the question. And to state more than a part, not leaving. Forward, the other question I had, Councilmember Ellis really hit the nail on the head. And so I don't have much more in regards, in which case, lastly, it was about affordability, I think it was council member that talked about housing. And Stevie, you said we could do better. And that feels a little ambiguous to me, in which case, if we can do better, that means we, this body, can do better. And I would like for you to give us an idea of what it is that we can do to make it better.
And when I, sorry, when I use the "we," I meant this community and not necessarily this body or me or even the city. That was related to the Saltillo project and the work that Cap Metro did with publicly-owned land in that project was specifically what that comment was directed. So I don't know how much this body can participate in the, but we and our partners at Cap Metro as part of that, we recognize that there is an opportunity to do better on these Transit Center sites.
I appreciate, and I think you did, like, sort of bookended with commentary about the ETOD overlay and how that's applicable. And so then lastly, I just, I was like, what are y'all seeing as positives? Like, what is showing up as like a real, holy moly, got it right? Like, what are the highlights?
I mean, we would not be here recommending these plans if we didn't find the entire plans positive. I think for me personally, it is the idea of leveraging Cap Metro's investments in their site in concert with regulations and in concert with city investments and having all of those things pushing in the same direction. And that's big. And that's what planning is about.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chair.
Just tell me where we are. Councilmember Lane, all yours.
Sorry, I meant to cough before I turned on the mic. First, I really want to commend this work. It's so important to have a thoughtful planning process and ensure connectivity in the vein that Councilmember Segal, you know, mentioned and that you are already working on. I just have a couple of questions. I have been looking for a map that will show the stops on the total Project Connect system. And, you know, this, the ETOD is focusing on connectivity to that total system. I'm wondering if you can direct me to a map that shows either now or as follow-up, the stops on the total Connect system, and then also the current stops plus proposed, like two different visualizations.
Sure. I have an easier answer for the first than the second. So the typology map that you'll find on the ETOD website is the sort of current conceptual location for stations on all of the Project Connect initial investment. And so that includes the potential light rail lines as well as the rapid bus.
Okay. So I'm on the website, I believe, but I don't know where to find it. I guess I can search for typology map?
Yes. Or we can follow up with a link for your office also.
Okay. And, okay, I'll go ahead and ask the other questions as well and then try looking for that. So it's so important. It's so important to be able to have an easy-to-follow conversation with residents all over the city about how they can connect to the Project Connect system, because city and Cap Metro focus being very much on that system. I represent the northern suburbs and the northwestern suburbs of Austin. Our northern boundary of the city of Austin is farther from the North Lamar Transit Center than North Lamar is from downtown. The western boundary along 620 is also farther from the North Lamar Transit Center than the Transit Center is from downtown. In many areas, including significantly low-income areas, areas with target populations like seniors, youth who are trying to get to educational opportunities, the ACC students who are, you know, multi-generational households as things have gotten more expensive, as people have gotten displaced out of central Austin, they have already arrived and are living in these outlying areas of the city of Austin. And to be able to have an effective conversation with residents and even to understand myself, where are the existing stops that can connect into that Project Connect system? What is proposed that has a stop, not just passes through from another jurisdiction outside of the city of Austin, but where there's a stop? And that would facilitate not only helping my constituents understand what their options are as transit goes and how to connect, it would also facilitate conversations that, you know, I have in places like the Campo Board with CTRMA, the places I go on my travels to try to build collaborative efforts. And so I definitely would love to see that. And I see that ETODs were adopted and this resolution was adopted in 2023, which is, you know, pretty recent. But I also know that we have redline stations. We have at least one that has significant tracts of land that are under single ownership, serving lower-income parts of the community with limited access to cars in many cases, and lots of challenges by the distance and time it takes to travel through all these areas. And I would just like to have an effective conversation with visualization about what is actually coming and planned or not, to allow people to connect effectively with the existing stops that we have, if that makes sense.
That makes sense. And I will say on the redline station, it's worth also noting that the redline stations are absolutely part of the ETOD policy plan and part of the thing that staff will be doing as we wrap up work on these two planning efforts and move into an East Riverside update that's kind of next coming, is figure out what our next slate of projects are based on the priorities, like planning projects. So there is a possibility to prioritize that redline station for planning services.
And as I came into office four months ago, at that point in time, there were still some express bus routes that were going to be coming online in relation to Project Connect and that work, and I believe they're already online. The connections for these outlying areas to the stations are, I haven't yet seen that as part of the express bus plan. And that's part of the reason that I'm also asking is just to have clarity on what's coming, especially in a time of such fiscal constraints. What is it that is Project Connect? So thank you for helping me with that.
And I also wanted to go back to the question that you first asked about the typology map. It's actually in our presentation today as well.
Is it this map?
That's the one. It's a little small, but that has all of the station pairs that are part of the existing Project Connect initial investment system.
Okay. Great. So I'll know it when I see it, and I'll be able to find, okay, so it's current and it includes express bus routes that are part of the Project Connect planning, but not proposed?
It does not include, that map is not going to include the express bus routes. It is, because the work that council focuses on with approval of the ETOD policy plan in 2023 is Metro Rapid, Metro Rail, and Urban Rail, or not Urban Rail. What am I looking for? Light rail.
Metro Rapid?
So Metro Rapid bus line?
Bus lines?
Correct.
Bus lines, yeah. Whatever bus lines are part of.
But not express bus or the commuter lines that typically just have one stop at a commuter station and outside of downtown. This effort is focused on the Metro Rapid lines that have multiple stops up and down the line.
Okay. So the Metro Rapid lines are on this map?
That is correct.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you so much for helping me with that and for also the follow-up. I just find this type of, I really do highly value the effort to provide connectivity for people who have not historically been part of the planning process. And I am simply concerned that the city grows so fast and our planning process doesn't always capture where these people are now living and have been for some time and their need for access right now. So thank you so much. And I do believe that bringing that effort to our outlying areas will boost the goals of Project Connect to increased ridership. Because as it stands right now, the traffic over that distance that's farther from North Lamar, farther to get to North Lamar, is much worse. Once you hit those areas, it starts to improve. And so the conversion of cars is more challenging as people experience that. So, thank you.
Councilmember Rayla?
Thank you, Mayor. The 183 has traditionally been kind of the dividing line between kind of urban and suburban. I think our urban design guidelines stopped there. I believe that the park fees also, that seems to be the major kind of transition point. Is there any thought, or was that part of kind of the thinking? And let me kind of try to clarify that question a little bit. While I would agree as a general matter that 183 is probably a good suburban, urban distinction, that North Lamar in particular and kind of the areas surrounding North Lamar are really more urban in kind of form and feel than other areas within the area, within the North Lamar Transit Center kind of a planning area. I don't know, I was just curious, was that discussed or was that part of the flum change?
I think in general, no. This work is really taking it from a lens of higher-intensity uses and development that's more urban in nature along our transit system. And I think the sort of general split between urban and suburban paradigm on 183 still holds true for more conventional areas that don't have access to rich transit service, but even places like the Domain have already kind of blown through that a little bit. Like, I don't think, that's not a wall in quite the same sense that you might describe it as.
I completely agree. That kind of the, we don't have a neat little boundary in the middle of the city that's urban, and that there's really very patches that are much more urban in form outside of kind of the central core of the city. And Councilmember Segal asked about it, but I think in the process, and I know I was at one of the North Austin Civic Association meetings that y'all presented at, very well-received a presentation, and I appreciate your outreach, but, you know, one of the big concerns is the accessibility, mobility. The streets really do not, there's a huge area, I mean, honestly, if you see that circle on the map, it is extremely disconnected, very difficult to traverse if you're a pedestrian or a bicyclist, even if you're in a vehicle. You know, you're going probably a mile out of your way, you know, something might be a half mile away from you, but you end up driving a one and a half miles to get to the location. How is this, and I saw on some of the, where y'all were kind of drawing connections, you know, street and other connections, is that part of the flum change, the kind of proposed streets? Or is that, you know, ASMP stuff that is separate and apart?
It's both. So those proposed street connections would be, are part of the plan, which will be part of Imagine Austin. And then as an initial implementation step, we will also be recommending amendments to the Austin Strategic Mobility Plan, because that is sort of the governing body that folks look to for subdivision and street connectivity work for the city.
Got it. So the street extensions essentially, I mean, I think about Guadalupe in particular, the north-south area would be an excellent street to connect to 183 and really beyond 183. Those are discussed in the flum, but the ASMP, the Austin Strategic Mobility Plan, still needs to be amended to reflect those?
Correct. So that they make sure that they're being incorporated into all of the processes the city uses to get streets.
Great. And then last question, and again, this may have been mentioned at the NACA meeting that y'all were at, I can't remember, but in a good chunk of that area, the North Lamar Transit Center area, I believe that the last new multifamily, or the last multifamily construction in that area was like in 84? Or, you know, something like, in other words, there's really been no new housing stock. Can you clarify that, or did I remember? Did I hear that correctly?
That is correct. I don't want to say that I know everything that's happened in the last I don't want to say that I know everything that's happened in the last year and a half, but a year and a half ago, when our consultant, or when Cap Metro's consultant team had done the work, they had pulled the research together and the last multifamily development that had happened in the North Lamar half-mile circle was in the mid 80s.
Yeah, it's really just, is there another part of Austin that you could say that for? I'm not sure there is. It just goes to the, I think, to the affordability question and to the opportunities for housing in that area. It's a very working class area that has a long and proud history. We ultimately, though, we do need to increase the available housing stock in that area, again, with affordability absolutely in mind. But there's a lot of, you know, aging apartments. I know Haka has some properties around there. And, sorry, one more question. Jamestown Park and any future, again, is that outside of the scope of the flum? I know that's getting into more kind of granular detail that the flum doesn't really go into, but.
Anna, do you know? That's the topic one.
That is outside of the.
That's outside of the flum, great. Well, I know that there's a lot of conversations about Jamestown, and that's another, another concern in the North Lamar Transit Center area is parks. It's a park deficient area. And Jamestown is a plot of land that the city owns. It's just a vacant field right now, but look forward to developing that into a park as soon as possible. But thank y'all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anybody else? Yeah, Councilmember Segal?
Thanks, Mayor. And just a brief follow up, my staff reminded me I missed a question. So really appreciate all the context and thank you, Councilmember Vela, for fleshing some of that out. So what's next, you know, assuming we approve this? If you could just give a sense of the timeline, you know, for us to want to work on these mobility things, the housing aspects, you know, if you could lay out, you know, the timeline moving forward to implement all this?
Well, like we mentioned, there's multiple steps to completing implementation within the two transit centers. Cap Metro is currently in the process of updating their policy plan to make sure that they look at concession guidelines and they're analyzing different sites to see which two they will move forward with redevelopment. So that is within the Cap Metro site. Then outside of that, that will be private properties that we hope get incentivized to redevelop in the way that the Transit Center is calling for. Like Stevie mentioned, there's different tools that are in the works, such as the ETOD Phase Two overlay. And we're hoping that as the planning department works with you, that we start to make sure that your concerns are addressed so that we can bring it forward and that can incentivize some of the redevelopment in the area.
I'd just add to that, the things that this dais will probably see most short term will be the amendment to the Austin Strategic Mobility Plan, continued work to develop Phase Two of the Equitable TOD overlay tool. And then once this plan is on the books, you could start to see individual property owners bring in rezoning requests under the New Future Land Use map.
Okay, thanks again to you both.
Councilmember Lane? Boy, it didn't take you long to start looking the other direction?
I'm right back.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you again. This is so important, the work that you're focusing in on here and the lessons that are being learned so that they can, those lessons can be applied at other places as we move forward. Really appreciate that. Did want to let you know, I have searched on typology map and searched all through that section. I don't see any maps that look like this one. I'm not sure that there is a public view of that on the website. And the one that's in the presentation stops at Palmer and where it cuts across 35 and MOPAC, just would love to see in future presentations, at least one centering map that includes all of Austin or the ability to see the parts if it's a system-wide connections issue.
And we will follow up after today's meeting, make sure your office has a link to the map and where it's available online. And as we come back for future presentations, we'll keep in mind to have an uncropped version of the map. Appreciate that feedback.
Okay, folks, thank y'all very much. Appreciate you being here and the presentation. And I want to say again, thanks to Councilmember Vela for covering while I was off the dais. Members, that concludes item B2, unless there's something anybody wants to say or do, manager, anything else?
Mayor, we did need to try to take that first speaker again for B2.
Okay, I did, very good. If we've got, let's do it.
Ian Wilson?
Hi, Ian Wilson, District Three. I was able to make it out to at least one of the public engagement events for this, and I've been following it online. And it's always inspiring to see how hard staff works. They're really wonderful to interact with and just inspires confidence as a community member. That being said, some elements of this are really, really hard to keep track of and understand and convey to people who are, who ask you, but what's going on or what do you go to tonight? And so, like, in today's presentation, there is an image of a train on the cover slide. The train will not, the light rail in the future, to my knowledge, will not be going to these locations or it's not anytime in the near future. It's just, it's hard to convey to people what this is about. Some of it's the naming, some of it's how the city chooses to use graphics. So it just would be great if you all would kind of help us in the community understand what this is doing and how to convey to other people what will be going on. And then second item is, it's really hard also to try and keep up with all of the different ETODs and what it will mean for the different, or that kind of the development path forward with the city. I know that Salto ETOD is different than ETOD Phase One, which is different from this, which is different than ETOD Phase Two. And I understand that this is all very complicated in the weed stuff, but it's just not easy for, I think, a lot of the general community to understand how this, how this is progress and how they should be excited about this. So anything you all can do to help convey that this is something the community should be getting excited and support would be great. And then the last thing is, during the meetings, and you guys discussed this a bit already, but any active infrastructure around the station area is something I think really, really needs to be supported.
Thank you.
That concludes all B2 speakers.
Great.